All right, well, it is 6:34, so I think I'll call this meeting to order. It is the Sherborn Select Board Meeting of Thursday, June 12th. We have an executive session at the beginning and at the very end of this agenda. But if I could start by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the executive session agenda.
Okay, good evening. Item number one is meeting with Town Council and the Zoning Board. Why does it say Zoning Board of Appeals in Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM, 449 Mass., 444, 2007, to discuss 41 North Main Street LLC versus the Sherborn Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee Number 2021-06, in pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements, specifically the public records law, General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, 26, to discuss privileged communications from Town Council regarding litigation. Item number two is discussion with Labor Council regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with the Sherburne Police Association, Mass. Coalition of Police Local 158, the Police Bargaining Unit, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM, 449 Mass., 444, 2007.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any amendments to the first executive session agenda?
No, I move approval of the agenda as read.
Second.
I got to move in a second. We'll vote, roll call, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Before we enter executive session, Zach, do you need to call your meeting to order?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. This is a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Sherborn, June 12th, 2025, 6:36 PM will open the meeting. Attendance is by roll, McBride is here. Mr. Labby, are you here?
Todd Labby, present.
Great, I think we have a quorum. I move to move this meeting to an executive session, Todd, to discuss the matter that this Moore's read out, I believe, and so do you agree? Do you second that motion?
I second that motion.
How do you vote, Todd?
Labby, aye.
And McBride, aye as well, move to the executive session, thank you.
All right, thank you, and I also move that the Select Board needs to enter executive session for the purposes read by the Assistant Town Administrator. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, roll call, vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. We are now in the executive session, could you please stop the report? All right, welcome back. We are back in public session, it is 7:30. This is the Sherburne Select Board Meeting of Thursday, June 12th. And in the interim, Dan Sickel has entered the meeting, so we've got Dan, Jeff Waldron, Paul Durencis, and myself, Marion Noitra is still absent. But can we have the Assistant Town Administrator please read the open session agenda?
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have not had any questions tonight for public comment. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours advance may be added. Item number one is the introduction of Amelia Landau, our new sustainability coordinator. Item number two is the consideration of a donation from the Dover Sherburne Youth Baseball for a new flagpole at Jamison Field, Little League Field. Dave Welch will be here for that. Item number three is the consideration of a donation and a grant to the Fire Department. Chief Zach Ward will be here. Item number four is the discussion regarding a town hall.
This kind of large water in the house, thank you.
We'll speak about that. Item number five is the consent agenda, which is the TA payroll warrant and draft minutes of April 17th and May 15th. Item number six is Select Board reports. Item number seven is Town Administrator updates, and then we go back into executive session for item number three, which is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining union employees pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, for the police lieutenant. Item number four was strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining union employee pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, and that would be for the DPW director.
Thank you, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, I move approval of the agenda as read by Assistant Town Administrator.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, let's do a roll call, vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right, so item one is introduction of our new sustainability coordinator.
Yeah, so Amelia has joined us as the town's new sustainability manager, actually. We've updated the title to sustainability manager.
Great.
She's shared with our neighbor Holliston for a little less than half the time. We get the majority of Amelia's expertise. Amelia recently graduated from Wellesley College with an environmental studies major. She's worked for the Town of Natick, assisting in their sustainability endeavors. She's done some work as an intern for the U.S. EPA. She's worked for the Massachusetts Green Communities Program as an intern. And we're quite excited to have her here. She's had her first meeting with the Energy and Sustainability Committee and one of your advisory committees. They met earlier this week, and we're quite excited to have a chance to start onboarding Amelia to all of their initiatives. And Amelia will be working a lot on the Green Communities Grant, and energy tracking and management of the town buildings, and you know, looking at how ways that we can get more efficient and more energy efficient with our town buildings. She'll be helping with the MVP 2.0 process, to help with our vulnerability preparedness. She'll be looking to move forward the town's climate action plan. If you recall, that was a plan that was finalized last year, but there was a lot of action items associated with that. Amelia will be tasked with many of those and helping kind of champion those along. And we're very happy to have Amelia with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Did you want to say anything?
I'm very happy to be here, and I would love to eventually in person shake the hand of the rest of the Select Board. And while I am meeting Sherburne Holliston, I'm looking forward to getting to know the Sherburne community better, and you know, you will see me out and about doing things, so please say hi.
Great, thank you.
Amelia will generally live here at Sherburne Town Hall. She has a desk behind Jeannie and the Select Board Office, so that's where you'll find her. She does have a phone, I don't think we have a direct phone number from the outside as of yet, but she has an email address. We'll be updating the town's web pages so folks can get ahold of her. And next week, actually, you just mentioned you're going to be working on sort of a informational handout as introduction.
Great. Do you have any particular sort of highest priority goals that you would have for Sherburne over the next year?
Well, currently, because of my position, I've been trying to sort of look at the priorities that Sherburne has given me and priorities that Holliston has, and trying to find out what we have in common, so that I can most efficiently, you know, see if there's funding opportunities that address those concerns. I know that one of the things that both towns have been working on is publicly available EV charging stations, and it turns out that there's a couple of very locally compatible ways that we can work together to sort of be better at that than we would be either on our own. So that's definitely something that I'm excited to tackle.
Great, thank you so much, we are happy to have you.
Paul's got something to say.
Oh, oh yeah, go ahead, Paul.
He's got his non-yellow hand.
Yeah, non-yellow.
A real hand. I just wanted to welcome her and to remind everybody that the reason why she's important is that we really need to protect our climate, our planet, and our environment, and those are things that she's going to be helping us work towards. And energy conservation is a big drain on climate change and our environment, depending on what kind of energy is being used, so that sustainability with more solar, more electric vehicles, equipment, and all those kinds of things are desirable goals for the communities going forward, for all communities going forward, particularly for our community, because we're in particular a community that values the natural order of woods and forests and trails and open space. And finally, a key part of her function and where she fits into a lot of other activity is grant writing and grant programs that can help us make the planet better, make our community better. So all these things are, I think, very important and well-supported by the voters and the community as a whole. We all share these goals and are looking forward to her leadership.
All right, well, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks for coming, yeah, we appreciate it very much.
All right, item number two, consideration of a donation from Dover Sherburne Youth Baseball Softball, new flagpole at Jamison Little League Field, Dave?
Yes, thank you, good evening. Here on behalf of Recreation Commission, Chair, and to ask the Select Board to consider donation from the Dover Sherburne Baseball Softball Organization for a new flagpole at Jamison Little League Field. This is a 35-foot flagpole that would be located adjacent to the scoreboard outside of the outfield, in right field. And this is a donation that follows a substantial donation made early in this year to bring lights to the same field that have been in use for the past month, month and a half.
Oh, explain the difference.
We've had a number of exciting games occurring multiple days a week down in Jamison. Joining me this evening from Dover Sherburne Baseball Softball is a member of their executive board, he's online through Zoom, his name is Michael DiSimone, he's the treasurer, and he's actually volunteering, working site, you can see him inside the concession stand right now, raising more money probably for the next donation.
Take a diet coke over here.
We got games going on, I'm sorry, I double booked myself, everybody. I apologize, I committed to be a volunteer tonight.
So anyway, live from Jamison, Michael DiSimone, and so we're just asking for the Select Board's consideration to accept this gift.
Great, Paul, do you have a motion on this?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion presumably to accept the gift, and it's seconded, we'll take a roll call, vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Steve, before we vote, I just had a quick thing I wanted to slip in.
Oh yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thanks. So this is great, really appreciate the generosity, and it'll be a fine addition. I just remember that in the past with talking about flagpoles and the banner poles in town, I think, and Paul Durencis can correct me if I don't get this right, but I think it was kind of an informal policy that the flags flown are the American flag and State of Massachusetts flag, and kind of then town-oriented things, and that there isn't, you know, that we don't have other kinds of flags up, because if you have one from one group, then people from another group would say, hey, we want our flag up there too. So just wanted to kind of check and see if that was the similar intention here.
Yeah, that's my understanding, the only flag that's going to be on this pole is going to be the US flag.
Okay, so that's great, I mean, I assume that was the plan, but just wanted to clarify that, and I'm good and happy to go ahead with the vote.
All right, thanks, I know Jeff voted, I'm going to go back to Paul, I don't remember if you got your vote in.
First, I want to compliment Dan for doing a very nice presentation on the state of the law in a very complicated area. Well done, I vote aye.
Dan?
Thank you, Paul, I vote aye as well.
All right, and I'm also aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Michael. All right, next up, we have Zach Ward with consideration of, once again, a donation and grant to the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so it's two separate items, we have a grant, it's our safe grant, covers a couple of things, the events that we do, we hand out, you know, the plastic fire helmets or other safety oriented items at our open house, the library fair, other events, and then there's a senior component of this grant too, so it helps us buy smoke and carbon dioxide detectors for people in need, lock boxes so we can get into their home in the event of an emergency and so on. So that's a grant, $5,400 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye, well, thanks to Zach for getting us this money.
Dan?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well.
There's a $2,000 donations from the Lee Family Foundation, they donated it to us specifically for safety equipment for the firefighters. Very thankful for that, and after the Board accepts it, we'll send them a letter.
All right, excellent.
We'll look to accept it before anybody changes their mind.
All right, moved and seconded, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right, thank you very much, chief. All right, next we've got Town Hall entry signage, and this is listed as yours, Jeremy?
Yeah, I'll give an introduction. So it's, there's been a discussion over the last year or so about replacement of the entry signage from Washington Street to the Town Hall campus. The current sign is aging, and there's been, we've heard this, folks have had, have been challenged to find the police station as a building behind the Town Hall. So it seemed that an update is timely, and also the Council on Aging with the increased activity here at Town Hall has a request to add their department to language on that sign. So we, in your packet, you'll see there's a lot of different versions that were suggested by the sign vendor that the town has used. And, you know, over the last few months, we've had a number of conversations internally amongst department heads as to what might make sense for replacement signage, and we seem to coalesce around, in your packet, there's one that's got some stars on it, it's a suggested replacement signage, with the spelling correction for Council on Aging, that would, that's the one that we seem to coalesce around, but we wanted to have this conversation, you know, out with more folks to get, you know, more ideas and sort of get everybody's buy-in and broader consensus on what the entry hall signage, entry signage may look like. Christina Gallant, the Council on Aging Director is here, she did provide some additional information in the form of some slides, if you're interested, she could go through those to help sort of give some context as to why the Council on Aging feels it's important to have, you know, their department listed on the entry signage.
Yeah, Christina, do you want to give your presentation?
Oh, sure, yeah, hi, everybody. So Jeremy, you're going to put it up for everybody to see?
Yeah, Jeremy can, he'll put it up.
That would be great.
Here we go. There you go, Christina.
Great, thank you. So I typically do more bullet points, but I really just wanted to write it out, so knowing that you all could read it in advance. And I think I also included some photos at the end of the packet, so that you could see that there are a couple of towns that do actually have COAs in town halls, and I think what's really important to note is that very few COAs are in town halls, most have their own centers, and so this is where the reality is right now, Town Hall is our center, we love being a part of Town Hall, but visibility and awareness, we are finding that we're getting weekly questions about where we're located. So I know there's that assumption that everybody knows COAs in Town Hall, everyone knows where it is, but they really don't, and I think a lot of it is whether it's new residents or longtime residents, or residents who have recently hit in their 60s or 70s and are starting to reach out to COAs for various reasons. We included a quote, which actually came in on Monday, saying, "My ETA should be 1:15", she was picking up medical equipment, "Where do I go?", Town Hall, "I don't know where the Council on Aging office is." So that, to us, is number one, as well as just recognizing that most, most COAs are not in town halls, and accessibility is something to think about as well with the proper signage, so that we are easily located. It's also a very important, something that we are working for, towards is the age-friendly community standards, which we did that assessment a few years ago through UMass, which was all part of that initiative of both being age-friendly and dementia-friendly, and this goes right along the lines with more healies, reimagine aging in 2030, and so we're kind of following along with the state in, the goal is to make every city and every town in Massachusetts age and dementia-friendly, also ADA compliance in just having the clear and accessible signage with support the Americans with Disability Act, being able to easily identify where people are going. And again, I mentioned first-time visitors, but we're also working with a lot of adults who are either becoming caregivers for their aging parents, or they have caregivers for aging parents, so this is new, we're getting a lot of times some out-of-town children who have parents in Sherborn who haven't used our services before, or there are a lot of children who are in Sherburne along with their parents who don't have any idea where COA is. Community inclusion is key, we are, the older adult population is 25% and only growing in Sherburne, so we want to make sure that the older adults in our community are feeling like they are a part of the community, and then also just the emergency and outreach services, so that everyone can easily find us. And it's very simple, we're just looking to have COA included under Town Hall, and then you can look at the photos with the Town of Dedham, as, that's the local one, and then this other one, the bottom one is Milis, and we wanted to just show that Milis is in the Town Hall, and they actually have a, they have a separate entrance in their basement where their senior center is, so we just wanted to show that example of the Milis Senior Center being there. And also, what's interesting with Milis is they have tons of signage sort of everywhere, which is quite impressive. Melinda actually went over there for us to take some photos on her way home from work, and she said the signage was terrific. So that's basically kind of our reasoning of why, I know this discussion has been happening for several years, so we're just hopeful that we can, we can get our name out there and just be included in the sign.
Yeah, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I support the Council on Aging, but I'm not in favor of having it be this prominently on the sign. The building is Sherburne Town Hall, and so my concern is, it's also where the Town Clerk is, where the Town Treasurer is, where the Board of Health is, so I think the sign should simply say Sherburne Town Hall, and maybe put a sign below that similar to the police station that says Council on Aging, because I think it's misleading that people might think that this is just the senior center, it's not Town Hall. So you have one in here that, I thought you had one that had the Council on Aging on a separate from the main sign.
There's one that has a third sign that says Sherburne Library.
Yeah. I had, I mean, I think I would put Council on Aging and the Sherburne Library like that. I don't, I don't like the Council on Aging being in the main sign, because it's not, it's Sherburne Town Hall. And you have events here, but you actually only have an office, you know, here, you use basically Select Board Meeting Room for tons of events, and I'm supportive of that, Christina, but I think it's misleading to me to have it be the only thing listed on the sign.
Yeah, I understand, I absolutely understand your argument, Jeff, I appreciate that. I think, and if there's a vote to just, we don't necessarily need to be under Town Hall if it's something that's a separate sign like the police station, that would be great too. I think my only argument with that is the assumption with Town Hall is that all those departments you listed are typically in Town Hall, and COAs typically aren't, so that's just my one spiel, but I feel like it would be fantastic to have us underneath the police station too. We just would love to have some signage, no matter, I think that's your thoughts of where you want us to be on that sign, is very, we really appreciate that.
Hi, Jeremy.
Yeah, just a little, a little context about all the different alternatives. We were going through them, they have a lot of pros and cons. One of the thoughts on this suggested replacement was that the signs kind of represented individual buildings, so that the Sherburne Town Hall and Council on Aging was in one building, and the police station was in a separate building, that just sort of a design standpoint.
This one's you're talking about, that one at least is better, because the Council on Aging's a smaller font.
And?
Is that the one you're talking about?
Folks were shiny, oh, actually the one up here, where Sherburne Town Hall and Council on Aging are in the same building, so that's one sign, and then the police station is a separate building.
I like, if you could do what you said at the start, I like listing the library then too.
Well, the library was, it started getting pretty tall.
Yeah.
It started getting pretty massive.
But why not make?
And the library has an exterior sign on Sawans Street.
It's a different entrance.
And probably could use some direction, some signage on the eaves of the building, just like the.
The only thing is their 88 entrance is down here.
Yeah.
That's why it's there, but I just don't, I don't.
There's a lot of trade-off.
I think that they should be less prominent than the Sherburne Town Hall, so I would like to propose that the Sherburne Town Hall be a separate sign, and that we have subsigns for whatever signs are desired.
Could I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. So thanks for this, Christina, you know, in a way, I completely get the desire to indicate that Council on Aging is here. I had initially a reaction, sort of similar to Jeff's, that with the way this sign was set up, you know, at Town Hall, and then it was almost as if, to my first look at it, the Council on Aging was the beginning of a list of what's in Town Hall, and then that, you know, seemed to create some of the issues that Jeff raised. I think the proposals, I have it on a separate sign down below, seems fine, I think another way it could be handled is what was done on the Dedham sign, where it said Town Hall and then had an ampersand for and, so it's Town Hall and Council on Aging, as a way of making clear that Council on Aging is not a beginning of a list of the offices in Town Hall, of Council on Aging, Town Clerk, Assessor, and so on. So that might, the Dedham example might be one other way to handle it, but putting it on a separate sign, as Jeff suggested, you know, seems like another, another way that could be handled.
Yeah, I'd say I agree with both Jeff and Dan, that essentially some way to distinguish Town Hall and Council on Aging, I mean, in the current proposal, it looks like Town Hall and Council on Aging. I mean, in the current proposal, it looks like Town Hall and Council on Aging are the exact same size, exact same font. So that they are essentially just equivalent to one another, which I don't, I don't know. I, I just agree that I think Council on Aging on the signage should be sort of smaller font or, or separated somehow. I did also want to step back and you know, obviously the COA's sort of desire for a senior center has been ongoing for several years and the COA has brought a few warrant articles to town meetings in, in prior years. So, and I've actually played some part in it as well. I, at one point was trying to negotiate with the community center to carve out some permanent space for the COA, which subsequently the COA told me that they weren't interested in that anymore. That was, I, I know that wasn't you, that was your predecessor. If we were to put a sign on the Town Hall that says this is where the COA is, I mean, are we, are we putting to rest the desire for the COA to have a standalone senior center, at least for the foreseeable future?
And are you asking me?
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure. I think the reality is that if, even if, if a, a senior center becomes in the works, it's going to, it's a long time away. We are really happy with our space in Town Hall. There are so many advantages with us working in Town Hall, having the conference room, having the library, really being able to work within the campus buildings. So we are very happy with where we are. We, we, we love the space and we also just love collaborating with all of you and, and having so many community partners. So I think we're, we're set for now if you're all happy with us being in Town Hall.
Yeah, no, I think my point is just that if we're making a sign that says Town Hall and COA, it's probably going to, I mean, how old is this sign? How long have we?
It's a good question. Sean, do you happen to know how old that one is?
I think we're redone.
It's, it's probably.
It's been here since 20 years.
20 years. Yeah, so probably 20 years, yeah. I mean, that's not to say that we couldn't change the sign, you know, 12 years from now, but still I, you know, my, my point being that I only really want to put that on the sign if we're pretty sure that that's where it's going to be for the next 20 years.
Well, and also, I mean Christina, I was gonna continue them after the summer, but your coffee hour was in the community center every Tuesday or whatever day it was, right? So you have events elsewhere.
Mainly the library and Town Hall. And then we do pilgrim church for some of our Thursday cafes for about eight months out of the year. But I, in going back to discussing the community center, yeah, I was not involved in that, but there would, so much work would be, need to be done at the community center to even make it suitable for our use.
Great, Paul?
So a couple of points. First, I'm complete agreement that they need signs. I believe that that would be very much in the interest of the community and in the interest of our seniors. It helps bring focus and attention and hopefully increases participation in Council on Aging activities. So I support the idea of a sign. Secondly, I've always supported the idea of a separate Council on Aging facility because most of the, the nine communities that I represent as a lawyer have that. And so to me, that's sort of the standard. And we don't have that. It, it just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem right not to have something for them. But I understand that that's a long-term goal. Given the fact that three of the members have already indicated, a majority of the members have already indicated that they want to see a separate sign. That separate sign is something that can be removed at any time if the Council on Aging finds a different home or a different location. So it does make sense to have a separate sign. So there would be Sherburne Town Hall as sort of the, the main headline. And then there would be a reference to the police station, which is needed because the police station's in the back and people don't know where it is. And then have the Council on Aging. So I would support the other three members' comments that they'd like to see a separate sign there. And I would say to the Council on Aging that having a separate sign there works for you also. Cause if you get your senior center at a separate location, it'd be very easy to take that sign off of this location and use it at a newer, different location. So for all those reasons, I would move approval of the idea that Jeff articulated originally for.
Seconded when you put my name, right? I'll second your motion.
Wait, do we actually need a vote on this?
It's unclear if you do, but I mean, certainly would appreciate your support. And if that comes by a vote, that's great.
I guess before we actually vote, I want to, I want to know what, oh, well, actually I want to know what Sean has to say because he just raised his hand.
I, I don't have much to comment on for the sign, but I, I'm hoping you'll be really clear in the motion. And I wonder if someone can share the one sign that was in there where, where it had separate sign for police and library. Cause I think what you're about to vote on is similar to that, but substitute library for Council on Aging.
Yeah, Jeremy is pulling it up here.
Although in saying that, it still might have, oh, forget it. So it would be that without Council on Aging.
Yeah, the top would be different.
On the upper side, but it would be where the Sherburne Library is.
Yeah, and we, we felt that all the logos were, was a little cluttered. So we removed the shields. But it would be a, a three-sign stack like, like that.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the, I can see the confusion also of the police station is a separate building. So somebody who is new might come in, drive onto the campus and be like, okay, well, Town Hall is here. Drive around and see that the police station is back there and then continue driving around wondering where the third building is.
That was why the staff didn't really focus on that one.
Yeah.
It is going to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a public meeting. Go ahead.
So you know those, this is a crazy idea. Do you know those signs they have at strip malls? Where there's like two columns kind of, and it like labels the top of it. And then it has replaceable little panels for all of the actual names of things that take up residence there. I think if we're worried about permanence, that's the easiest way to address that is having one tall sign with, you know, six slots or something that says Sherburne at the top of it, like Town Hall, Police Station, Council on Aging. Library, you don't want to throw it in there. And then you've got two extra slots for whatever else takes up residence.
And that might be an awfully large sign though for the, the scale of what we're, we're.
Fortunately, there's not that much changing of departments and, and occupancy of Town Hall also. It's a good idea.
Sorry, I missed most of the discussion, but I, I did study all those signs and did have an opinion.
All right, please, please share.
Fresh, I don't know what you've all said, but I, I like the idea of having the Council on Aging as a separate panel for the same reason. And the police station definitely a separate panel, but I think that's a sign that would go out by the road. So once you drive in, Town Hall is pretty obvious. But there could be some signage on the way in that tells you, yeah, you're on the right road to the police station. Because the police station is so not visible from the main road. I think you need more than maybe at the library steps or on that side, you need a sign, library. So people don't have to go very far before they understand exactly where these things are. But out on the road, I like the three separate panels.
It's more or less what we said. The only thing about the library is the main entrance is actually not here, it's up there. But the 88 handicap entrance is down below. It's kind of a weird thing. We'll let somebody with more intelligence than.
More collective input. I do think the, the larger size is necessary in this case. We have had signs in town, like at the clerk house, where everything that's there is kind of there, but it's so small. Driving by in traffic, you don't, you can't read it. So this should be really like, you know, obvious, easy to see, readable.
Dan, do you have an opinion on a, a three-sign stack?
I'm fine with the three-sign stack. I think it, I think it works. I thi, I think that works. And as Marion said, maybe some additional signage would be helpful, but I think the three-stack thing works.
All right, well, we already have a motion and a second on the table for the, the three-sign stack. So I just wanted to make sure we fully discussed that before we actually voted on it. So to be clear, the motion that's on the table is to approve signage where there are three separate signs, the one on top that says Sherburne Town Hall. And then a second sign underneath it that says Police Station and then the one, a third one below it that would say Council on Aging.
And Steve, to follow up on Jeremy's thing about the shields, the, the, the seal, the town seal would appear on the top panel for Sherburne. And the bottom two panels would just be the words, no symbols or seals.
Correct, correct. All right, so that is the motion that's on the table. If there's no more discussion, I'll take a vote.
I kind of like the Police Station, I'm just modifying before you vote, Police Station with the blue arrow, because it shows you the.
Yes, yes, yes.
Was important for the directionality.
All right, I second your motion. Wherever we are, I second it.
All right, well, let's, we'll do a roll call vote now. Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all. We're very thrilled. Thank you.
More thorough discussion than I was anticipating. All right, I just accidentally closed my agenda. All right, what are we on to now? Oh, wait, are we on the consent agenda now? Consent agenda.
Move or approve.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
All right.
Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right, on to Select Board reports. Anyone?
I don't have anything.
Uh, I have a report.
What?
The, actually I have two reports. First is this week, I think it might have been today. There was a, an information session, I think was sponsored by MAPC, but included people from the Mass Attorney General's Office talking about giving guidance to towns as to how to deal with ICE enforcement. If ICE comes to Sherburne and is active in Sherburne, people need to know what their rights are and what their rights are not. And we certainly want to be a law-abiding community. I wasn't able to go to this event, but they did include in the invitation a link to the summary by the Attorney General of how towns should handle this. And it was, it was guidance basically to town officials, but honestly, I think this is good guidance for the whole citizenship. This whole citizenry. Because if there's ICE activity in Sherburne, anyone who happens to be there should know how to behave, what they can do and what they can't do. So I won't talk about the content, but I just think this is a good sort of the, the guidance document is a good thing first to make sure all the town officials and community, committee and board members have a copy. You know, town employees, but also we should talk about how to make it available to everyone in town.
Can I ask that's important?
Yeah, I think it is important.
Is that something we can put on the town website?
Yeah, certainly, yeah. So I, I wasn't able to make the, the training either, but Diane did.
I did, oh, so it was very informative. They did give you guidance on if ICE comes and you know, things you should, should not say and things that would be proper to. It was very good. I took quite a bit of notes and I, I printed out the pamphlet too that explains the whole.
Okay.
So I can, we can scan that and send that to all the different boards and committees.
Yeah, we'll certainly distribute it, but if you'd like it posted at Town's webpage, we can certainly do that.
And I'm wondering how to let people know, because you know, it's, it's sort of the talk or people ask each other, you know, what would you do if you were witness to an ICE detention? And I think people need to have a clear idea of, of what they should do and also people who may be in town who are undocumented and who want to know, you know, exactly what their rights are. What they do not have to answer or do have to answer to. So I'm not sure, you know, we have the chronic problem as to how to get things out to the whole community. We don't have a community.
Well, I have two suggestions. One is, my reaction is we should probably have Chris Petrini look at it. I know it came from the Attorney General's Office, but I just know ways in which a town could possibly react. And the second is, maybe have Chris or someone, we could have a session in town and have either have it be Zoom or, or in person or hybrid.
Or hybrid.
And so that then at least people are aware and if we put, I'm not on LinkedIn or, or I am on LinkedIn, I'm on Nextdoor. We put it on Nextdoor and other people, at least people are aware of it. But then also have the materials that she described, maybe at the library.
Sure, that's this. That's basically the guidance from the Attorney.
Yeah, but she said the poster, the poster document or whatever you said.
This is not a poster, it's, it's maybe seven, eight, nine, 10 pages long.
Oh, so that's this.
It's that document right there, yeah, correct.
Maybe it could be almost like on a chain or plasticized or something at the library or I don't know what. I'm not a communications person, but.
But I think maybe an event with Chris Petrini.
Yeah.
Is a very good idea because I think if it were advertised on the website and by word of mouth and on Nextdoor, that people would come. People really want to know.
My only other fact is you might wait till after Labor Day. This is, this is going to be Sherburne in the summer.
Did the AG's office say that they were providing any training, other training opportunities or like, could we invite them to do such a session?
Oh, that's a good point.
Or a pre-recorded one.
Oh, right. You know, I have to go back to the MAPC.
Maybe they have a contact.
They may have a contact or MAPC would know. Okay, so that's, that's mine.
Right, any other Select Board reports?
I have a quick thing, Steve.
Yeah, go ahead.
On a much less serious note, Marion and I were at the 1858 Town House Annual Meeting a week and a half ago. And we received the dollar in rent or the lease payment and it was duly delivered to the town collector. Who said it might cost more than a dollar to get it deposited, but it would be appropriately deposited in the appropriate account.
And has it the account.
The one thing I did, I added to that is I sent the copy of the receipt back to the Town House people.
Oh, good.
So that they had proof that we deposited it.
Excellent.
The old days, they just used to hand you a dollar bill when I went to their board meetings. They didn't even give you a check.
Oh no, that was exactly what they did.
We got our picture taken.
Yeah, they made, they made Marion and me stand up in front of the, in front of the group and then they handed us a dollar bill. And it wasn't even a.
Should have been a giant novelty dollar.
Yes, yes.
All right, any other Select Board reports? All right, no, then Town.
I, I do have one other report.
Okay.
Yeah, I was at the Town Forest Committee this past week and there were. And there were, as as usual, recently in Town Forest Committees, there was a group of of mountain bikers that are very enthusiastic about the new mountain bike trails. But the question arose from a minority in in the room. Where does the town have a vision for ultimately how the town forest should be used? I think the concern is that there there needs to be a balance, an explicit balance for, you know, bike riders, which are certainly welcome in town forest and other uses like hikers or nature photographers or education or whatever else. And anything, of course, that makes a change in the town forest, like some of the new trails or features that have been put up. Some people, the the cyclists love it, but some people don't because they wonder where is this going to end, you know? Our town forest isn't that big. We need to take care of it. So I'm not sure how this should be approached. Certainly, the Town Forest Committee is in charge of managing the town forest. We agree on that. But I think there's a need for some sort of forum where there are more voices heard in town forests, and I don't know.
Yeah, my my problem with the Town Forest Committee is that you more than I, but very few people go to their meetings, so the vast majority of people in town don't have any idea what's going on and what's being approved or not approved.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's almost like the others you had, that we need to make people aware of it. Because there may people may have opinions and their opinions can come out after the fact once they hike behind Pine Hill and get run over by a mountain biker or something, you know, it's just
Right.
it's just a tricky thing.
Amelia, if somebody add?
So I was at a Open Space Committee meeting the other day where they also brought up that they would love a comprehensive town forest sort of plan. And actually, that's listed as one of the items of interest, I guess, in our resilience plan. So I, now that I'm here and now that I've heard it from three separate places that we'd like a comprehensive town forest management plan, we'll get on that.
Have you ever met Marion? Have you met her yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
We go way back.
Sounds like we'll, we'll second that proposal, Amelia.
I think the Town Forestry Committee has some some work ahead as well, aren't they?
Yeah.
Isn't it due for the forestry management plan?
Yeah, their management plan expired in two thousand twenty-four, but the work up designated in that plan is, isn't done yet. So they're being encouraged to, you know, get on there.
To to complete the work identified in that?
Get the work completed, but yeah.
Do they need to look forward and and develop a new management plan, correct?
Right, up to now, the management plan that went from two thousand fourteen until twenty-four that was the plan that approved the cutting that's now been done and some people are very unhappy with did not include things that need to be included like invasive control and other things. But we need a new plan. The last one was done, I think the Town Forest Committee, basically, the chair got a forester from the state. Phil Benjamin, I think he's part of DCR or something, maybe somebody knows better than I, who put together the plan. But that was ten years ago. And so.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask the Town Forest Committee to come to one of our upcoming meetings to give an update on their current activities and their immediate plans? And that would also give the general public an opportunity to also weigh in on what the Town Forest Committee has and hasn't been doing and their opinion on what they ought to be doing?
Yes, we certainly can.
All right, so let's do that. All right, any other select word reports? All right, Town Administrator reports.
Yeah, I have just a handful. An update on the Pine Hill School HVAC project. Last week chatted, that project's moving along well. We have, we last week chatted, we we came up with an idea to do a change order to potentially add some form of air conditioning to the auditorium space. If you recall, that wasn't included in the the initial contract. So the engineer that was hired by the school department has done that design and that's been submitted to the contractor. We should have some pricing tomorrow as to what that cost might be as a change order. Depending on the magnitude of cost, it's possible, we, our clock's ticking, but it's possible that we could do a reserve fund transfer to fund that work. It's a, it's a, it's not a full blown air conditioning as the other spaces, it's moving air, getting fresh air in. With some sort of energy recovery unit so that, you know, the cold air you're bringing in is is preheated and and good for the space, so. Just wanted to give you a heads up there. We're trying to to work that into potentially having a reserve fund transfer for this current fiscal year on that. But it's going to depend on the the cost that we receive from the the contractor, hopefully tomorrow. The Board of Health has made an offer and it's been accepted for a new Board of Health Administrator. So she would be starting in early July. So just wanted to relay that good news.
Where did she come from?
She's a recent graduate of UMass at Camhurst, a master's degree in public health and some other good experience, so. She's in the process of relocating closer and, yeah, the Board of Health is excited to bring her on board.
Great.
An update on the Sherburne Historical Center Museum. So with the favorable votes at Town Meeting and at the ballot, the architect has been given, you know, the green light to go full steam ahead with the final design and bidding. We hope to have the project out to bid later this summer with the goal to have a contractor awarded the contract this fall, with some construction start later in the fall, early winter. We've, with that goal, we've put together a working group, we're going to meet every other week to sort of help move that final design forward with all the stakeholders, the library, the library trustees, library director, Sean, myself, you know, a number of other volunteers from the History Center. So that, you know, all the players are together as we're developing the plans and specs and it goes out to bid so that everything comes together. One of the things we're also working on is the MOU that that's required between the library, the History Center and the town. So they had worked on an MOU some years back. It's been dusted off and starting to be updated, so this working group will help vet that and when when it's to a form that will, you know, you know, is appropriate, we'll bring it forward for the select board to see as well, but just wanted to let you know that that process, we're working towards having that MOU in place. And we'll have it to you in coming meetings, but it would be in place, we hope, by the end of the summer, well in advance of having a contractor on board.
Yes, sorry to interrupt you. Quick question though, are they also working on securing or finalizing a private donation to supplement the funding?
Yeah. And I've had some discussions as well with with them, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
That's well in hand and, you know, we're working out the logistics of that so that we have
Excellent.
the funds in hand so that we can award the contract after the bids come in. And finally, just one more update on signs in general, townwide. I had mentioned I've been receiving some complaints about private signs and signs in the right of way. It's sort of the season of the sign with, you know, local graduations and the lawn service signs and everything, and it seems kind of grows with the vegetation in the spring, but Chris Canny, the the chief building official, zoning enforcement officer, he has met and walked the Village Center and talked to many of the business owners and other residents. That has had some effect, but we're still seeing the need to sort of do some some more education. It hasn't totally hit the mark yet. So we will be sending out a, what we're calling an educational letter to the the businesses and residents along that stretch to to help remind them again of the requirements of seeking signed permits with the ZBA. And, you know, what are the restrictions and what the zoning rules are in effect, so. Sort of a progressive discipline approach. There are still violations that that Chris could issue, but we're we're going to take a measured approach, do some education first.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, so after that, I think our next two items are executive session. So I am going to move that the select board does need to enter executive session for the purposes of strategy sessions to prepare for contract negotiations.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
All right, and I'm an aye as well, so we are now in executive session. Oh, yeah, and also I want to mention that we are not going to return to public session after the executive session.